Would you give us an ovation?
Let us pray. Dear Lord and heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for our many blessings. We ask for your guidance for our national leaders and if they work towards peace in the Middle East, and we ask that you be with those people in the Middle East, especially in Syria where there's so much turmoil and war. We ask your blessing and care for the men and women of our armed services serving around the world and at home to protect our freedoms. We ask for your guidance in our deliberations this evening on behalf of the citizens of Frederick County. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Vice Chairman DeHaven, Julius, and a pledge of allegiance.
Could we stand face the flag, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Option of the agenda, Mr. Riley?
Chairman, I have no changes.
No changes?
No changes.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, and a motion is your second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tabs. Tab F, Parks and Recreation Commission Report. Tab G, Public Safety Committee Report. And tab H, Public Works Committee Report.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton, is her second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Next is citizen comments for agenda item only that are not subject to public hearing. Mr. Riley, did anyone sign up?
Yes, sir. We have two people. First one's Jay Martz.
Please, would you come forward, give your name, magistrate or district, and let me your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening, I'm Jay Martz. I'm with, in the Gainesboro District. Chairman Schickel, members of the board, Administrator Riley. I noted the Public Works Committee has outlined the scope of work for county government space planning needs assessment. This seems to be another past due action taken on the path to justification to have a new county administration building constructed, yet another step that appears to be out of sequence in the normal development process. I've attempted to do a little homework on this subject and found that the Virginia Public Procurement Act and the procurement process best practices outline the identification of needs as important number one step. The community requirements should be based on strategic plans where management has outlined organizational needs. For us, that should have been accomplished some time back and outlined in the Frederick County Capital Improvement Plan. The latest version of this plan was the fiscal year 2013-2014, was approved at a public hearing on January 23rd by all the supervisors in attendance. This strategic document with a five-year outlook, a component of the comprehensive plan that consumed the time and effort of many of our county employees, boards, and commissions, it did not identify a requirement for a new county building. I assume this was but one reason that the Planning Commission voted nine to three against endorsing a proposed amendment to construct a county admin school board building. Additionally, I do not understand why the Comprehensive Plans and Program Committee of the Planning Commission was not involved in providing recommendations for a capital facilities project of this nature. I believe it is one of their major functions, governmental functions. You know, we have a process to determine taxpayer-funded priorities in our capital improvements. I would recommend we stick with it. I would also like to remark about competition in the PPA process. If this county project, if this county building had been listed in the SIP for a period of time, it's a five-year plan, would more proposals have been submitted? Would more solicited proposals have been submitted? Perhaps. The best practices procurement literature indicates that a government entity generally receives the best price under a reasonable number of vendors are competing for a contract. Best procurement practices also highlight that providing specific versus general requirements results in better price competition. There seems to be no requirements, specific or general, that were outlined by the county on this new administration building. Excuse me. I'm still curious how a group of real estate, construction architects, legal and financial professionals all came together and decided to submit an unsolicited proposal for a facility that no one has determined that a requirement exists, and further, how the county government has quickly moved to put in place all the bureaucratic requirements for justification and possibly eventual approval. I recall that the Business Climate Assessment Citizens Committee report recommended that you streamline our processes. Is this the outcome? At last, as a last comment, I would add that I'm a bit troubled by the closing comments from the chairman at the last meeting. I was not there to receive them in person, but I have watched the video a couple times. I was elated to see all the folks that exercised their right to speak at this public forum, and then quite disappointed listening to the closing comments from the chair. I believe the inference was that citizen groups, perhaps such as the one that I have the pleasure to lead, the Northern Shenandoah Valley Tea Party, may be fabricating information to increase attendance at some of our meetings, and further inciting the masses for no good reason. I have provided input to this governing body many, many times. I am curious to how many other supervisors on this board feel that I would falsify information to fill seats at one of my meetings. Most of you have accepted and spoke at several of our meetings. Do you believe that I would do this? Thank you for your attention and ability to address the board.
Next, Mr. Riley?
Last speaker is Maureen McGraw. This is not Maureen.
My name is Morris McGrew, they call me Maury. I live in the Peckham District on Double Church Road in Stevens City, and I spoke to the board at the last meeting, and when I attended that meeting, I was not representing anyone but myself, and my opinions as to the matter of the secret proposal for the sale of the current county office building and the erection of a new larger facility somewhere in the county, for which I stated four points which are in the record. At the time, at the end of that meeting, I again stood and made a public comment regarding my understanding of your need for the vote that you took on that matter, and my intention to watch what the board does on this in the future. You, Mr. Chairman, made the following comment, and since Mr. Martz already read it, I'm not going to read it again, but at that time, I did not fully grasp what you were saying. As I returned to my seat, my hearing was slower than your speech. I have since had the time to review what you said, and it gives me pause to wonder why you would suggest that I would fabricate information or incite masses. You do not even know me. With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, as a private citizen, I have every right to attend these meetings and to question our public officials, inform them of my opinions, and I believe we citizens have a right to expect complete openness and transparency from our elected representatives. With regard to the matter at hand that evening, the facts I talked about came directly from articles in the Winchester Star. If I was wrong, either the Star made a mistake or someone in the county gave them bad information. I did not express my opinion regarding, I did express my opinion regarding a proposal's supposed unsolicited nature. In retrospect, I should have said that it may not have been the result of a request for proposals, but certainly it did not just arrive out of thin air. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to clarify this matter.
Anyone else, Mr. Riley?
No, sir.
Supervisor comments? Well, someone once said, "If a shoe fits, wear it. If a shoe doesn't fit, you don't have to wear it." So I don't know the defensive reaction to my remarks. If they don't apply to you, you should not take them to heart. If they did apply to you, then I hope you did take them to heart. That would be what I would have to answer to your inquiries. Next, minutes, work session. Sanitation Authority, August 14th, 2013. Your motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor DeHaven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the work session with the Sanitation Authority, August 14th, 2013, are approved. Next is the regular meeting, August 14th, 2013.
Mr. Chairman, I have two items in the minutes, actually three, two minor corrections and one addition that I would like to add, and I believe the copies have been placed at the place for each supervisor. First, on page 18 of the minutes, the paragraph that begins, "Mr. Schickel advised," the second line, the first word, is printed as "they" and it should be "the." And then on page 37, the paragraph in the middle of the page says Supervisor Hess noted a lot of valid questions. The last line in that paragraph, the word "stop" should be "step." And then, let's see, right before the vote, I'd like to, it was omitted from the minutes, the following paragraph. Supervisor Hess asked, "Didn't we receive a letter from the school board asking to be included in the building? In fact, the information originally presented to us was just for a county office building, but when the school board learned of it, when it became public, we received a letter from them asking to be included." Chairman Schickel responded, "You are correct." So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for those changes and those corrections and that addition to be included in the minutes.
Okay, two of those are on the handout before you. One is a word change on the previous page, is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes as amended of the regular meeting, August 14th, 2013, are approved. Next is the outside agencies presentations on August 22nd, 2013.
Chairman, may I for approval?
Motion by Supervisor DeHaven to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the outside agency presentations on August 22nd, 2013, are approved. Next is Amy Bracewell, Site Manager, National Park Service, to make her introduction to the board and provide updates. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for letting me speak to you today. I wanted to introduce myself and give you some updates about Cedar Creek and Belgrove National Historical Park. I came onto the post of Site Manager in March of this year and slowly getting settled in and learning the way of the lay of the land. I am also joined new as of March by our superintendent, Jim Northup. He is both the superintendent of Cedar Creek and Belgrove National Historical Park, as well as Shenandoah National Park. We are administratively collaborating with Shenandoah, which helps our small staff of five, we're able to tap into their IT support and their technical assistance when we need it. So I'm very appreciative of their support as well. Since we've been on board in March, we've done, started a lot of projects that I'd like to update you on, and hopefully these will see the end of these this next year. We've been working with the Virginia Department of Transportation on interstate signs for Interstate 81. We have been approved for signs to go northbound and southbound on exits 302 Middletown and 298 Strasburg, as well as orientation signs once you get off of the ramp, exit ramp. We were not approved a sign for Interstate 66. We appealed that and also got rejected. So we are working on a new strategy to come up with visitors from Interstate 66. We opened a visitor contact station in Middletown in April. We're seeing visitation, about 500 visitors each month, and I invite everyone to come take a look at it. We have some great exhibits about the history of the Shenandoah Valley, as well as a great fiber optic map that shows the Battle of Cedar Creek and the troop movements through light display and narration. We had a ribbon cutting in May. Congressman Wolf helped us cut the ribbon as well. So we've been really enjoying that contact station for visitors. Let's see, we have a trail project with our five park partners, working to open accessible public lands and our partner lands and link them through a trail system, and hopefully also in the following phases to link this trail system to the outlined communities, to Middletown and Strasburg Trail Systems, to the larger community around us. We're looking at, working on four of these trails inside the park this next year, and will then phase in subsequent trails in the following years as funding and staffing allow. We're also working with our partners, as you may know, next year is our big sesquicentennial anniversary at Cedar Creek, and we're working with our partners to plan a really meaningful and powerful commemoration for next year. We started this planning, we're having monthly meetings with our partners, and we hope that we have planned some events that could encourage community engagement, involve some partnerships with our community organizations as well. So we are looking forward to commemorating that event next year in October. We're also doing several things, other things with the partners. We're working on a shared graphic identity to create a graphic for the park as a whole so people can easily identify with us. We have regular meetings with our park partners, and we're also consulting with a federal advisory commission that is set up to advise and consult the National Park Service. Our next meeting is next week, next Thursday, 8:30 a.m. in Strasburg, and it is a quarterly meeting where we update our commission and get input from them as well. So I'd encourage you to visit the park, and I would love to hear from you if you have any specific updates that you would like to hear now and again. I would love, with your approval, to come back every few months to provide some updates on our projects.
Any questions? Thank you for the invitation, and we'll take you up on that.
Thank you.
Next, Supervisor DeHaven, will you assist? The Employee of the Month Award Program recognizes county employees as an important and valuable resource. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it is my pleasure to present Steven A. Moore for consideration as Employee of the Month for September 2013. Steven serves the Frederick County Sheriff's Department and is being awarded for his loyalty and commitment to his position as Deputy Sheriff. On June the 18th, 2013, Deputy Moore observed smoke coming from a building at 300 North Ken Street. He immediately responded and checked to make sure all residents were out of the building. He located a mother and four children. Deputy Moore was then notified that a fifth child was still in the residence. When the mother ran back into the burning home to find the fifth child, Deputy Moore went in after her and then brought her back out when he noticed burns on her arms. He then went back in again with Winchester police officers to continue to search for the child, but they were forced out of the building when fire and smoke fully engulfed the residents. Deputy Moore acted with courage, selflessness, and determination. Deputy Moore is to be commended for his initiative and dedication. Now I entertain a motion to approve Steven A. Moore as Employee of the Month for September 2013.
So move.
Supervisor Wells makes the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Steven A. Moore is hereby recognized as the Frederick County Employee of the Month for September 2013. The Board of Supervisors extends its gratitude to Steven for his outstanding performance and dedicated services and wishes him continued success in future endeavors. Thank you, Senator. Next, committee appointments. Extension Leadership Counsel, Shawnee, are we ready?
No, sir, not yet.
Parks and Recreation Commission, Stonewall?
Not yet, Mr. Chairman.
Board of Building Appeals, County Representative, did you get a hold of Mr. Gans?
Yes, I did, Mr. Chairman. He is willing to serve, and I would so move.
All right, we have a motion to reappoint David W. Gans to the Board of Building Appeals, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. David W. Gans is reappointed to the Board of Building Appeals. Next is the Hanley Regional Library Board. We have two people whose terms are expiring, and we have two recommendations. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend the appointment of Carol Fox and the reappointment of Larry Sullivan to the Hanley Regional Library Board.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carol Fox and Larry Sullivan are appointed to the Hanley Regional Library Board. And, Mr. Riley, I know we regularly give out those thank you letters to the folks whose terms cannot run again, that'll happen this time with Mr. Grog.
Yes, sir, it will.
All right, Industrial Development Authority, Gainesboro, are we ready?
No, Mr. Chairman, not yet.
Planning Commission, Member-at-Large, I would appreciate and make the motion that June W. Wilmot be reappointed to the Planning Commission?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. June M. Wilmot is reappointed as the Member-at-Large to the Planning Commission. Shawnee Sanitary District Advisory Committee, are we ready?
Yes, sir, on one of them. Mr. Hugh B. Van Meter has accepted the proposal to be reappointed, and I would so move.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hess makes the second. Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hugh B. Van Meter is reappointed to the Shawnee Sanitary District Advisory Committee. On the Board of Equalization, I don't think that we've had time to work on that yet, and it's out there. I don't think the folks have been talked to, nor what anything else is done. Does anybody else have a different opinion? All right. And Board of Zoning Appeals is out there too, but it's Shawnee, so when it's ready. Or is it ready now?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, move on to the requests from the Frederick County Schools to schedule a public hearing date to participate in the Fall 2013 Virginia Public School Authority VP SA bond sale. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On August the 19th of this year, the school board approved a resolution authorizing the application to participate in the VPSA Fall 2013 Bond Sale and request the Board of Supervisors' approval of the county's participation in the sale. It is requested that the required public hearing for this process be set for October 9, 2013. Proceeds from this bond sale will satisfy the projected cash needs for the construction of the elementary school additions and for A&E services for the replacement of a middle school. The amount of the bond application is $5.4 million, and again, the school board respectfully requests that a public hearing be scheduled for October 9.
Questions? All right, the request is to schedule a public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we set the matter for a public hearing on October 9.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The public hearing will be set for October 9. Next is a request for the Commissioner of Revenue for refunds, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county attorney is in receipt of the commissioner's request dated August 19th, 2013, to authorize the treasurer to refund First Merritt Equipment Finance $1,605.15 for amounts resulting from duplicate reporting and subsequent overpayment of personal property taxes on business leased assets for the first and second halves of 2013. Both the leasing company and the finance company reported the same assets by reports filed under different names on different dates. It's respectfully requested that the refund be granted.
Questions for Mr. Riley? Chair, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve the refund, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
Second item, Mr. Chairman, is the county attorney is in receipt of the commissioner's request dated August 21st, 2013, to authorize the treasurer to refund ProBuild Fast LLC Is that East or Fast?
East.
East, excuse me, for amounts relating to vehicles sold or moved out of the state for 2012 and a half of 2013. It's respectfully requested that the request be granted.
Questions for Mr. Riley? All right, is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton to approve the refund, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the refund is approved. Next is the Finance Committee report, Supervisor DeHaven?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Committee, excuse me, met on August 22nd, 8 a.m. There were quite a few items that were either carryforwards or donations, and the committee ruled or recommended that they be included on consent agenda, and those were items 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11, and I would so move.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and items 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11 are placed on consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Department of Social Services requests a fiscal year 2014 general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $50,000. This amount represents a carryforward of fiscal year 13 funds for strengthening Families Innovators for Success Council project, and $10,000 in state funds, and a new phone system of $40,000 at local funds. The committee recommends a move, approval, and I so move.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
Winchester Regional Airport requests a fiscal year 2014 airport capital fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $4,437,906, and a Fund 10 supplemental appropriation in the amount of $499,400. These amounts represent airport capital budget appropriation and the general fund share. The airport capital fund request will require a public hearing. The committee recommends advertising for the public hearing and approval of the Fund 10 supplemental appropriation, and I so move.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Who was that?
Mr. Hess.
Supervisor Hess makes the second. Discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
Public Works Director requests a fiscal year 2014 general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $99,061, and a landfill fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,178,000. These amounts represent carryforwards of unspent fiscal year 2013 funds. The quest has been endorsed by the Public Works Committee, and the committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
The Fire and Rescue Chief requests a fiscal year 2014 general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $850,000.[1733.83] The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that $850,000 is supposed to carries through this fiscal year. Is that correct?
Yes. That's correct, Mr. Riley.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, and the motion passes.
Public Safety Communications Director requests a fiscal year 2014 general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $200,000, of which $50,000 represents a carryforward of unspent fiscal year 13 funds, and $150,000 represents a grant received from Virginia E-911 Services Board. Funds will be used for the down payment on a new upgraded 911 phone system. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
The Finance Audit Committee Charter adopted by the Board of Supervisors requires an annual review and reassessment. The committee recommends reducing the number of Board of Supervisors representatives from four to three. Don't think that discussion reached a conclusion.
Any action?
Any?
Any action necessary?
Mr. Riley?
It was my understanding that the committee structure would remain that way until the chairman had a chance to evaluate the committee appointments in January of 2014.
You're thinking no action is necessary?
I would suggest that you take action on the amended charter.
Do you wish to make a motion?
We're going to amend the charter to represent three instead of four?
Yes, sir.
As you're suggesting, and then we can reevaluate it after we've had a chance to give it more study?
That is correct, and as the chairman stated, when he has a chance to review committee appointments in January?
Yes. I would so move.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The committee structure will be three until the end of the year or until it's changed again.
The County Administrator requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $377,396. This amount represents funds reserved in the general fund that will need to be appropriated and transferred to the Development Project Fund for various road projects. Also requested is a Development Project Fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $470,733.50. This amount represents transfer from the general fund in the amount of $377,396, and funds reserved in the project fund in an amount of $93,337.50. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
I think item number 15 was informational only. Am I incorrect about that?
No, sir.
Thank you. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the Transportation Committee report. You're up again.
One moment. There we go, Mr. Chairman. Oops. Great, thank you, sir. Staff presented information on the following pages regarding the request by Miller Milling for a board resolution of support as they seek rail access funds for an expansion of their facilities. It was motion is made by Mr. Racy and seconded by Mr. Fisher to recommend support. The motion passed unanimously, and I would so move that the board adopt the resolution.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The resolution is adopted.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
Our next item is a public hearing and outdoor festival permit request of Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an outdoor festival permit request from Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation, reenactment of the Battle of Cedar Creek, and this is pursuant to Frederick County Code, Chapter 86 Festivals. This festival will be held on Saturday, October 19, 2013, from 10:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Sunday, October 30, 2013, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, to be held on the grounds of Cedar Creek Battlefield, 8437 Valley Pike, Middletown, Virginia, property owned by the Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions to Mr. Riley? Was there an applicant present? If you wish to speak? If there are no questions, then we'll go forward with the public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider an outdoor festival permit request of Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation, reenactment of the Battle of Cedar Creek. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this outdoor festival permit? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, this has always been a well-attended event and an event that is very well-run, and I see no reason not to endorse this, so I would make a motion to approve the application for the outdoor festival permit for the Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation for the reenactment of the Battle of Cedar Creek.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the outdoor festival permit request of Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation is approved. Next is an amendment to the 2013-2014 fiscal year budget. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's respectfully requested that the resolution be considered with reference to the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. This is a budget amendment, and this is pursuant to Section 15.2, 2507 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. Purpose of the budget amendment is airport capital supplemental appropriation in the amount of $4,437,906. This amount represents the new projects and balances for projects in progress for fiscal year 2013-2014 for the Winchester Regional Airport. As the board may be aware, on the detail amounts, I believe federal funding in this program is $3.3 million. $3.3 million. State appropriation is $294,737, and then the local cost to be shared is $709,390, of which Frederick and Winchester are responsible for $694,390 of that amount. But that's the breakdown of how the airport capital budget is structured from federal, state, and local funds. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, as would Mr. Fisher, because I believe the director is not able to attend this evening.
Any questions from Mr. Riley or Supervisor Fisher? Our hearing now will hold a public hearing, an amendment to the 2013-2014 fiscal year budget as amended by the Board of Supervisors to entertain an airport fund supplemental appropriation amount of $4,437,900. Excuse me. $4,437,906. Amount represents the new projects and balances for projects in progress for fiscal year 2013-2014 at the regional airport. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this amendment to the 2013-2014 fiscal year budget? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Fisher. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Next is a conditional use permit, O-3-12. Go ahead, sir. This is a postponement from the last meeting.
Yes, sir. This is a public meeting. You did hold a public hearing on this conditional use permit back on your meeting at August 14, 2013. There were some unanswered questions that the board had asked. One of the questions that was brought up or concerns was brought up was one on the lighting of the tower, which the lighting of the tower will be taken care of through a conditional use permit. It is a reviewing agency comment through our airport authority that the tower be lighted, and that'll definitely happen through a review agency comment. The more impressive issue was that the applicant had not talked to the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee on this conditional use permit, because they were going to use or proposed to use their roads to construct this telecommunication tower. The applicant met with the sanitation authority, our sanitary district advisory committee of Shawnee Land, and they worked through some of the issues to move the project forward to you tonight. If the board supervisors feels that this application is appropriate, staff would put the additional, would put the conditions on that, would suggest the conditions be added to this conditional use permit. Just to review them real quick, that all review agency comments will be complied with at all times. Number two, the tire should be available for co-location of personal service providers. Number three, a minor site plan should be approved by Frederick County. Number four, the tire should be removed by the applicant or owners within 12 months of the operation or, excuse me, the abandonment of the operation. Number five, invented telecommunication tires not erected within 12 months of the approval of this conditional use permit, the CUP will be deemed invalid. And number six, any expansion or modification of this use will require a new conditional use permit. The applicant is here to answer any questions the board may have through the agreements that they have reached with the Shawnee Land Sanitation District Advisory Committee, and I'll answer any questions you, Mr. Chairman, or board members may have on this conditional use permit for a telecommunications tower.
Well, if you'd prefer the applicant address the issues of access, then we should go there first. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Pettway, and I'm here representing Verizon Wireless. Couple of weeks ago, we met with, a couple of weeks ago, we met with the Shawnee Land Sanitation District Commission and discussed some of the issues they had concerning our access to the site as well as our construction to the site and using their roads. From that, what we did was we went out and we looked at the site again, and we determined that, one, we can access the site from off of Back Mountain Road directly through the Micklewee's property, avoiding any roads within the sanitation district area during the construction. Two, we are, we will agree to pay the yearly assessment to access our site from that road, but that access would only consist of one SUV or small van, which would hold a technician who goes there periodically. At the most, we're talking about maybe once or twice a month. Realistically, we're probably talking about four times a year. Most of these sites are monitored remotely at our various switch sites, so we don't have a lot of activity to the site after the actual construction. Let's see. I'm just trying to... The only time that we would access or have access to the roads, again, is to just to use that to have the shorter access to the pole from off of Acetate Trail. And, again, that would include us having to do a small curb cut approximately 12 to 15 feet in width, and we have agreed that any damage that was caused during this construction of this curb cut into the site, we would repair and pay for any damages associated with that. And if there's any additional questions you may have?
Questions?
I have one question. I notice, number two, the tower shall be available for co-locating personal wireless service providers. Here in the county, we've got an emphasis on trying to bring internet service, broadband service, to some rural areas of the county. There are several providers of internet service who use radio transmissions. Would they be permitted to co-locate on these towers?
Yes. We always open up any of our structures to co-location, as long as it's structurally capable. We will design this pole to minimally hold up to two other additional carriers. It helps us with our capital costs on the site, as well as we have reciprocal agreements between carriers and other providers that we can co-locate, and they can co-locate in our structures as well.
Questions? Maybe staff can tell me how these arrangements will be memorialized?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We, talking with the applicant, I think the best way to make sure there's no misunderstanding would be to add maybe an additional condition to the conditional use permit, to worry that any co-locators would have to get, notify the county of Frederick that they may co-locate on this tire, so we can set up that agreements that were put in place for, to help the Shawnee Land Sanitation District.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I'd like to thank Ms. Pettway and staff for driving quite a distance one afternoon to meet with the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Committee and myself to go over the concerns raised by the committee. She took notes, told us she would take, get action taken on all these things before this meeting, which she has done. I've checked with the chairman of the sanitation committee, who is here tonight, and they're comfortable that what they have worked out is acceptable to the committee itself. But as Mr. Chairman was saying, I need to add two more conditions on the CUP in order for it to come in compliance with the desires and the promises made by Verizon. So when would that be appropriate?
Certainly. I think the rest of the board members would like to know what they are and get a response from the applicant.
Okay.
It's preliminary.
As Ms. Pettway has said, at first, they were thinking about using the Shawnee Land Sanitary District roadways to access the site. There was some great concern about the condition of the roadways both before and after that construction took place. An offer was made to Verizon about how that could be alleviated to the committee's concerns. They have since found another way to deal with that, and that is to bring access in from Back Mountain Road and not through Shawnee Land. So that took care of one of the major concerns that they had. The other was the lighting, which the airport is requiring that, so there's nothing we can do about that. One thing that Verizon did agree to do is to list itself, I guess is the best way I can say it, as a Shawnee Land lot owner, which means they'd be required to repay the $540 annual lot fee to help maintain the roadways. The other question was, as Mr. Hess has pointed out, this tire will be available for co-locating by other providers, and what we wanted to try to find a way was to make sure that we could get those other providers also listed as lot owners, so they would in turn also be paying the annual fee as a lot owner. And so those are the two things that I would like to add as conditions. One, that Verizon lists itself as a lot owner, and two, any co-locators, they would work with staff to find a way to also list them, so that everyone would be included in that billing for the Shawnee Land Lot Owners Association dues.
Could you respond?
Verizon has no problem agreeing to both of those conditions.
Thank you.
Everything else was agreeable that's been said?
Yes. Yes, it is.
We have work to do yet to memorialize. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, and it will be. I have a copy.
Other questions?
Yeah. Supervisor Lofton? Regarding co-locators, are we just talking wireless cell carriers? Or we do have internet service providers locally that aren't in the same business? And there, I know there are a couple of small businesses here in the county that do provide that service?
I'll let Ms. Pettway speak to that.
We would be open to agreeing to lease with any provider, whether it's for cellular service or broadband.
I just want to make sure it was clear that it wasn't just cellular providers. I just want to make sure it was clear that it wasn't just cellular providers, so, okay, thank you.
First come, first served?
Yeah, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Other questions? Supervisor Fisher. Who for who?
Whomever. For construction of the additional service providers that would go on the tower, construction access would be from Back Mountain Road.
That is correct, yes.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, with those two conditions we've talked about added to the six already in place, I would move to approve the conditional use permit number 03-13 for Verizon Wireless and Bertha McIlwes Trust.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Ms. Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the conditional use permit 03-13 is approved. Next is a discussion on the proposed ordinance amendment height requirements in the EM Extractive Manufacturing M1 Light Industrial and M2 Industrial General Districts. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Staff has received a request to increase the maximum heights in the EM, M1, and M2 zoning districts. Now, currently in those districts, the maximum heights are as follows. In the EM, the maximum height in the ordinance is 45 feet, and the current maximum height in the M1 and M2 districts is 60 feet. Now, the proposed revisions in front of you, first, I'm going to go over the EM proposed increases. The proposal is to increase the height by right to 60 feet, and then for an allowance of up to 200 feet for unmanned structures with a conditional use permit. Now, there would be an additional setback for the structures over 60 feet, which would be an additional two feet for every foot over 60. So just an example of how that additional setback would work. The EM has a 100-foot setback from RA zone property, so if you were to construct a 200-foot structure approved through a CUP, it would need to be 380 feet from the property line, which would be just a simple calculation. In the M1 and M2 zoning districts, the proposal is to keep the by-right height 60 feet, but allow up to 150 feet with a conditional use permit. And the proposed ordinance in front of you also shows the additional setback. And there's also another minor change in the M1, M2 districts, which is a revision to the supplementary use regulations for a height exemption that would expand the automated facility allowance to also include manufacturing as well as storage. This was discussed by the DRC at their July meeting and the Planning Commission at their August meetings. Tonight, we're seeking a decision from the board of supervisors as to whether this is ready to be sent forward to public hearing. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Questions?
Just one question. Any, I don't know whether this is the right time or not, any issues having to do with fire and rescue in terms of height and?
We've done a number of height increases in the past, and we hadn't, we have not received any negative feedback. We did send this proposed amendment to fire and rescue last week, and we did not receive any response back stating that they, that this was unacceptable.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
Ms. Bergens, do we currently have any structures in the county that reach a height of 200 feet?
No, so the highest structure in the county that we could find are some silos that are exempt, and they're upwards of 200 feet. The only other structures that are higher than that are in the city of Winchester, but I'm not sure they reach 200 feet.
And I hate to put you on the spot like this, if I may, but do you have any idea how high that building is at HP Hood?
The HP Hood, the building itself is 100 feet.
100 feet, and that's the tallest point of their structures?
Yes, yeah, and the tallest silo in the county we could find is at Miller Milling, and that's 120 feet.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I guess if I'm putting two and two together here, this letter that we laid right before us with the issues dealing with the conditional use permit and permanent structures, I think there's some validity to that, and I think perhaps this thing ought to go back and start over and look at, if I'm reading this letter correctly. I don't particularly like conditional use permits in some issues because you build a permanent structure and somebody comes along and objects to it, it's a little bit expensive because of tearing them down. And if we're in an industrial EM environment, I think it ought to be looked at a little bit more as a permanent structure and not a conditional use permit.
The Planning Commission expressed the same concern, and we tried to alleviate their concern by modifying the conditional use permit regulations, which are also in your agenda to take away the portion that allows for revocation based on violations that don't pertain to their conditions. So the way the ordinance is written, if a CUP for an industrial user was approved, the only revocation would have to be a condition, a violation of their specified conditions. So we tried to, I guess, modify the text to ensure that people understood that this isn't something that could be revoked.
No loopholes.
Other questions? Supervisor DeHaven.
Miller Milling silos, how were they approved? What process did we use?
Silos are exempt from the height ordinance, so they're...
By definition?
Yeah, there's a, there's a list of exemptions in the ordinance, and silos are specifically exempt from all height requirements.
Was there any discussion about kilns being treated similarly?
No, sir. The initial discussion and the, I guess, the request that staff received was only to proceed with a request to increase the height of all structures up to that maximum.
It seems like enough questions were raised that I would probably support Supervisor Fisher's desire to have a continuing discussion. To go from 45 to 200 is a big jump.
In support of that, I think we'd have to define where we want that discussion to have and what the discussion should be about in fairness to all parties. That's where we want to go. I would only ask for that. Discussion where and on what topics? Other questions, or go for a motion here? Okay, what is the pleasure of the board? You've heard some hesitation.
Would Supervisor Fisher restate?
I think it should go back through the process and look, look at this as a permanent revision to EM, M1, or M2, or maybe only one or two of those three. Maybe it wouldn't apply equally, but just the connotation of a CUP just...
In all fairness, it looks like from the material that that was debated at those other levels.
Yep.
Reject it, and back here, and if we don't like that, I don't know what we'd be asking them to do, is reconsider something that they took our opinion on.
I might go so far as to say then that I really have, have trouble agreeing to a conditional use permit for this type of a thing. It just, maybe a second look won't be with a little direction, perhaps. I might be in the minority, I don't know.
Well, I think it might be constructive if there was some heartburn with the conditional use permit and was sent back to find other ways to deal with the topic, that might, that might get there. Supervisor DeHaven mentioned something.
I would add to that, that, you know, these are pretty permanent structures, but even beyond that, and we're talking about quadrupling the EM height from our current ordinance, that's a big jump. I have great respect for the committee's process and their consideration. There just seems to be enough concern from the PC as well as from the committee that maybe we should look at, maybe there's an in-between. I mean, we require the towers be dismantled and removed. Should they cease to be used? Should we consider similar things for things like kilns?
Staff consultation, there is hesitation. How do we help those who involve in the process acknowledge that hesitation?
Staff would be looking for, I guess, first off, if the board has concern with the conditional use permit process, there's always the option to proceed forward with the height, the height increase as a by-right use, but if there's concern about the actual heights, staff would, we need to go back to, I guess, the drawing board and figure out what would be the maximum height that the board would be comfortable with as a by-right as opposed to a conditional use. And there's always the ability to do supplementary use regulations to do it, Supervisor DeHaven is talking about, as far as requiring that if something is discontinued, that it be taken down, but...
If this board decided it wasn't ready for a public hearing, would that be enough for you to bring us something else?
We would probably have to go back to the DRC, redraft, and then either come back as a future discussion or as a Friday mailing, and then proceed to a discussion to see if the amended ordinance would be acceptable to the board.
And what we can provide you, and I'll go for whether there's consensus by the board, but I sense that there might be some reluctance to go forth public hearing at this time, and what else can we give you to work with, having articulated the points? But doesn't, I'd rather, I'd rather not say it like change your mind.
Mr. Chairman, I think Supervisor DeHaven's comment, you know, we have silos that are permitted, not regulated per se for height. In fact, looking into it, why, is it a visual aesthetic thing that the way they're constructed is allowed versus the way what we're talking about here? So that might be something to look at as to what's the difference, why?
So I heard process here, and I heard amount of increase in height here, and somebody else have something to add?
Just clarification, if I could, Mr. Chairman. I mean, silos, just by definition, we don't restrict in any way, shape, or form, and no special process. So maybe there are other structures that should be included similarly. I mean, I assume that that initially was farm-type silos, but it certainly extends into our industrial family in the community. Warehousing, what's the height of the automated warehouse at the former GE facility? I asked you approaching that.
I can tell you, the ordinance allows for automated storage facilities in all the districts to go up to 100 feet.
By definition, again.
Yes.
Seems, maybe we should think it through.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. I noticed in the memo that we have, hold on just one second. The conditional use permit process will ensure that the board of supervisors is given the opportunity to determine the appropriateness of requested use in a particular location while providing an application with security that their permit cannot be revoked for issues unrelated to the approved permit. So are some of the changes we're talking about, is that going to take us out of the approval process then for future projects?
I took the comments more as something as staff might rely back, relay back to the committee process, and I don't know what the results of that relay of concerns and addressing of concerns would be, to know how to answer your question. Do you?
We, staff drafted the ordinance that went before the DRC as, with the conditional use permit in it, just because with the heights that were being proposed, when we originally thought that the board would want to see the additional oversight, and then when we went to the committee level, they, they also felt the same way, that additional oversight should be part of the approval process, which is why we went with the CUP, because that's the only mechanism in the ordinance to allow it to come before you for approval. So, but the DRC felt that the CUP was probably the appropriate way to go with this.
I sense that it won't get to public hearing as is, and so I'm just trying to perfect that.
Right, and if we remove, yeah, and if we remove the CUP aspect from it and go with a by-right, then it would be by-right everywhere. It wouldn't come before the board of supervisors.
Other comments, general comments or questions? The chair would probably prefer a motion that said it was or it was not ready for public hearing, and let it go at that with comments made by various supervisors, but what is your pleasure?
I would move, Mr. Chairman, it's not ready for public comment, and to have a public hearing.
We have a motion that the proposed ordinance amendment is not ready for public hearing. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Ms. Supervisor Collins. All is a favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Staff, I hope that was helpful. Next, discussion on proposed ordinance amendment, TDR transfers and development rights revisions.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Contained within this ordinance amendment are really three separate changes to the TDR ordinance that was adopted a few years ago. The first is a change to the TDR density table. The second is a provision for contiguous sending properties, and the third is in addition of a sending, of a density rate conversion rate. I'll go through the revisions one by one, the first being the TDR density table. This is a revision to bring the TDR density maximums into conformance with the updated RP density maximums that were adopted by the board supervisors back at your January meeting, which we, it's a change to now base the housing types and parcel size when considering the density. There's an increase in the RP allowable density when utilizing TDRs for development, and an increase in the RA rural areas maximum density utilizing TDRs to be consistent with the maximum RP districts, utilizing TDRs to make development, using TDRs viable in the RA and RP districts. Now, the second revision is a minor revision for contiguous sending parcels. Now, this includes an allowance to use contiguous or adjacent parcels for TDR transfers. What this means is that one parcel may meet all the requirements, such as the state road access, state road touch, I'm sorry, state road access requirement, but then other parcels that touch it do not, but they would still be able to come into the TDR program. Now, the third revision is what we're calling a density rate conversion rate. Now, this revision includes a conversion that would apply to density rates being applied to receiving parcels. The conversion would be based on the type of housing units being developed on the receiving properties, such as single-family detached, attached, or multifamily. So the table that's in your ordinance, really what it states, with single-family detached dwellings, when you're doing a development that has single-family detached, one TDR right equals one single-family detached unit. When you're doing townhouses, one TDR right would equal one and a half single-family attached dwelling units, and when you're doing multifamily, one TDR would equal 1.7 multifamily dwelling units. Now, that was based on the development impact model and the tiered figures for monetary impacts for residential units. Now, the process of where this has been, revision one went to the DRC back at their April meeting, and went to the Planning Commission at their May meeting. We then started the processing revisions two and three, which went to the July DRC meeting, and then the Planning Commission discussed all three amendments at their August meeting. So tonight, we're seeking a decision from the board of supervisors as to whether these amendments are ready to be sent forward to public hearing. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? I won't belabor this too long, but you're going to have to help me with my memory.
Yes, sir.
I must confess that when we did the TDR, because of the high density rates already available in the RP, it was unlikely that it would be utilized. I guess I never looked at or considered in my mind RA properties within the sewer water and service area, and that the TDR program would in fact be an incentive to circumvent the rezoning process. Others that I've talked to said that was abundantly clear to them, but it was not to me, and so it's, it's not settled in totally. That might have been just my limited view of the issue at the time. These receiving areas are identified, explain to me again, anything within the sewer water service area, only circles on a map, only comprehensive planned areas scheduled for high-density growth or development?
The, the receiving parcels are, like you said, they have to be within the urban development area, they have to be served by public water and sewer, they have to be comprehensively planned for residential. So it would have to qualify to be rezoned residentially in order to receive TDRs to develop.
RA property scheduled for development in a comp plan inside the sewer water and sewer service area, and I do TDRs, I probably will not do a rezoning.
Correct. And that's really the basis behind... And that's really the basis behind the TDR program. It's, TDRs are more, they are really only viable for RA property generally, infill that's already, that isn't zoned RP. Because once you get into your RP zoning, you already have a relatively high density. So from the beginning, it was always envisioned really that TDRs would be the most viable option on RA property in the UDA.
I don't remember that part. Only came to that revelation today. So, anybody else?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I don't think that when the program was initially developed, that it was particularly sold that way. But I think the reality of the ordinance as we adopted it was that that is what is permitted. As long as it's in the UDA and the sewer and water service area and is comprehensively planned for high-density residential use, that you could bypass the rezoning step.
Well, the argument that...
I don't think it was discussed, you know, particularly openly, the reality of that while we were discussing the details. I think we got buried in the details and didn't back out and look at the big picture.
The layout of it, I just did not think ever included that, but I can see how it got there. So I'm glad that you at least make me feel a little better about.
I don't think it was sold that way.
If I may...
But I think that it is a viable incentive for people to do the TDRs and to preserve the open space in the rural portions of the county, and to put the density where it belongs, and it's an incentive for both parties to accomplish that goal, as well as proceed with the type of development that is already planned.
Right. If I may elaborate on that, when, back when the rural area study was being conducted, staff generated some figures as to what the impact of one dwelling in the rural areas was. And under the TDR, we were simply moving the impact of a residential unit from the rural areas into the urban areas, regardless of the zoning, because in the urban areas, you have the infrastructure capable of handling that added impact. So it was more seen as shifting the impact from one way to another, as opposed to creating an additional impact. And under the state code, you're not able to rezone when using TDRs, so that was another aspect of that.
Other questions? Is it ready for public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that the amendment be moved for public hearing.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion. Hearing done. Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes no, but it'll go to public hearing. Board liaison reports, are there any?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I delivered the resolution to Mr. Ludwig, which I think all of you remember, his widow and daughter in Charlottesville last month, and it was very well received. Just wanted to let you know that and very much appreciate it.
Fine gentleman with a lot of goodwill toward Frederick County and gift of his time and effort, so that's great. Any other liaison reports? If not, then we'll hold the citizen comment portion of the meeting. This is the time the board sets aside for citizens to talk to the board about any topic. If you'd like to address the board, please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please. Is there anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Board, again, I'm Maury McGrew. I'm from the Opeckin District, Double Church Road in Stevens City. I didn't come here tonight to start a fight, but I didn't appreciate your comments after our comments. You're suggesting that you know something that somebody's doing wrong, and you're reflecting it on me. I am a man of the highest integrity. I would not incite a riot anywhere. I would not incite anyone to do anything they shouldn't do, and I would not ever, what's the word you used? It escapes me for a minute. Fabricate. I would never do that, and I don't appreciate you intimating that I or anyone associated with me would have done so. I don't represent any organization. I represent me. Okay?
Anyone else?
Chairman, J. Martz, Gainesboro District. I appreciate your indulgence with me and allowing me to run past my time and my original comments this evening. However, I'm not sure I understand your shoe-fits-where anecdotal comment. It was from this body that came the comments about fabricating information that arose. Are these mere unsubstantiated allegations and false accusations to discredit legitimate criticism from citizen groups? If not, be specific. Which citizen group comments caused you to make such an inference? I don't believe I have lied. I don't believe I have fabricated information anytime in my life, my career. So I do take this a little bit personal, and I would like to hear from the supervisors, as I mentioned before, what you think about the supervisors' comments about citizen groups out here manufacturing information to fill seats at our meetings. I believe we have a legitimate function in this community to come before this board and give our information out, and I think that's all that's happened here. So I would like to know specifically which citizen group you're talking about that has fabricated information. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Chairman Schickel, Supervisors, and Mr. Riley. My name is Pamela McKinley, a resident of Frederick County, Back Creek District. Mr. Lofton represents me, and I am here to speak tonight on an issue that the board has recently been considering, namely the relocation and building of a new facility for the Frederick County Administration offices due to the perceived need for more space. It is my understanding that this building initially housed not only the county administration offices and employees, but also the county sheriff's department. In 2009, the sheriff's department vacated this building, and subsequently, you gained more space than you originally had, and it now amounts to approximately 100,000 square feet. It also contains several conference rooms expressly for the use of this board and Public Works, Planning Commission, et cetera, and that seems like sufficient space to me. But I have requested a tour of this facility through Chris Tierney for myself and some other residents of Frederick County. I also understand that you recently purchased and had installed in this building a new telephone system which interfaces with the computers at a cost of $400,000. Now, that tells me that at the time you made the decision to purchase that new phone system, you could not have been thinking about moving these offices to a new location. So I'm wondering why all of a sudden this has become a priority? And are there not county departments which must remain in close proximity to the court so that they have daily access to it? If you move out by the airport, would you not then have to lease space in this building for those departments so that they could maintain the close proximity to the court? If so, that would result in additional expense to the taxpayers of Frederick County. I also understand that you will be making the last mortgage payment on this beautiful building in a short 15 or 16 months. That means the county would own this building outright. Being free of debt on this building is an enviable position to be in. The taxpayers of Frederick County would not be burdened for 20 additional years with unnecessary taxes to pay a huge debt on an unnecessary building. I urge you to give additional thought and consideration to all the ramifications of this project before moving forward, because many of us county residents are opposed to it for the very reasons I just stated. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Margaret Hobble, and I am from Back Creek District. Mr. Lofton is also my supervisor. And my comments tonight also concern the proposed county center. As required in the proposal that you all received, most of the information about the costs and financing of that building are being held proprietarily, and that means that those of us out here looking at it really don't have a whole lot of information. However, it has been announced that the building will cost about $40 million. What has not been mentioned in this is that the cost is for the basic building and not for the entire construction project. The price tag for the building is reasonably close to $300 per square foot, which is the average construction cost for an office building in this area at this time. But there will also be costs for the following, and I think it's only fair that we list those and that you should include them in any discussion that you have. There are fees initially for the architectural design, for building plans, for attorneys, project contractor, and financing. Internal costs for overseeing the project land, and I know that the, excuse me, I know that the proposal indicates land will be included, but I haven't heard any mention of it being free. Site preparation, minimal work in this area for the last planned project equaled several million dollars, and I expect that finishing that work is going to cost at least that much. There are two roads and a bridge costing more than $5 million, installation of utility lines, including sewer, water, natural gas, electricity, telephone, the finished construction for the interior of the building, furniture, because I know you're going to want new furniture, not the old stuff from here, the telephone system, which we've just heard for this building costs $400,000. For the new building, it may well cost more. Computer systems, a parking lot at approximately $200 of space, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and landscaping. And I don't pretend that this is a comprehensive list of costs associated with this project, but it's the information that I have been able to add up and things that I know probably will be included. It's completely understandable that the project is going to cost more than $40 million, probably a lot more. The cost of the project will be financed, and the county, which I read taxpayer, will have to be responsible for repayment plus interest. The county can finance it, or financing can be provided by another party. In the first instance, the county owns the building, and it pays the debt plus the cost of the money. In the second, the county leases the building, maybe with a buy-to-lease plan, I don't know. I don't know what kind of a process that would be. But in any event, there would be money for the loan, money for the interest, excuse me, and money for the services. Taxpayers don't need this building. Thank you.
Seeing no one, we will close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Board of Supervisors comments? We got two?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
If I may, unless Mr. Fisher wants to go first.
Go ahead.
Three comments. To the gentlemen who think that your remarks were accusatory at the last meeting, I certainly didn't take it that way, and I'm sorry they took it that way. Number two, I believe, if I'm not correct, Mr. Riley, when the sheriff's department moved out, they moved out of the Joint Judicial Center and not this building?
That is correct.
Okay. And number three, I think this discourse is great, because as being a member of the Public Works Committee, I always like to hear what citizens have to say, certain concerns that they have that we can use in our deliberations. I'd like to say this is nowhere near the done deal that I think people have envisioned, but it certainly is good to have this discourse, and I thank those people for giving their views.
Mr. Fisher?
I think what I've heard this evening, the questions that citizens have are exactly what I've got, you know, that's why we need to look at it, and that's why we are looking at those questions that you have, need to be answered before we go anywhere. And that's, I feel like that's what we're doing. So for anything, anybody who thinks it's a done deal, don't assume that on my part.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make...
Supervisor Collins.
I think a better term, instead of misinformation, is lack of information. One comment tonight was a lot of statistics about how much this project's going to cost. Well, if that's how much this project's going to cost, I'm probably not going to be in favor of it. So if that's the case, then I will not be in favor of it. But we don't know what the cost is, because we don't have what's all in this pot. The phone system, when we voted on that, I asked a specific question. Is this a portable phone system? Yes. If we move out of this building, the computer system and the phone system come with us. Additionally, I believe we're still on the hook for quite a while on this building, but on the other building, I believe we're going to have paid off soon, if I'm not mistaken.
This building will be paid off next year.
This building will be paid off next year, okay. Then I misunderstood the paperwork I had. So that's, that's another something to be asked about, if we're going to have this being leased free. But once again, a lot of information, it's lack of information, not misinformation. And I was with the sheriff's department, we were in the courthouse building, and I was part of the help to move it out of the courthouse building over to its new location. So I was part of that.
One comment I might offer, Mr. Chairman, that would be helpful to these folks that want to take tours, I would suggest you start at the school board offices first, and then come down here and tour this building, because the proposal, as a proposal, is a consolidated office building, not just a replacement of this office building, but a consolidated office building. So when you look at it, look at it as in its entirety, not separately.
What else? Well, I'll conclude with a promise. I will listen intently to our speakers, and I will try to correct inaccurate information, and I will do so first personally, if at all possible, and only publicly if I have to upon repeat, and perhaps that'll work better. You have my promise. I will talk to you personally if I hear you have your information not quite accurate. And then I have one request. If you do decide that you want to tour this building, I would prefer you not say that Chairman Schickel invited you to do so, that you just make sure that the people know you're citizens of Frederick County who would like to look at the building, and I would prefer that, please. Unless you've talked to me first. Again, like the other supervisors, I thank you for your attention, perhaps a little self-correction in me, and I'll try to do better. You have my promise. Any other comments? Supervisor Lofton.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would like to point out, and hopefully leave on an upbeat note, we had in our package this evening some informational sheets for some of the committee appointments we made, and one was from a young person.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
And I would just like to commend them, obviously they're young, because that's where they put it in there, and so it's so hard, as most of us know, to get volunteers, and I just wanted to commend them for taking the opportunity to ask to be put on that board, and just, thank you very much. We certainly appreciate your willingness to serve.
Well, let me take this opportunity to, my oversight under committees, one of my appointments, the Finance Committee, is Angela Rudolph, local CPA, younger than I am, young lady. Yes, she stepped forward, and we talked, and her heart's in the right place, and I'm sure that as she gets her feet wet, she'll serve the committee well, and I meant to inform you of it. You have her sheet before you, and encourage you to contact her should you choose to so. I'm sorry, I forgot that.
Got it.
Other Board of Supervisors comments?
Chairman, if you could bear with me just one moment. In part of our Finance Committee discussions, we also learned that the Finance Director and her staff have, again, for the 27th consecutive year, been recognized for their reporting. Government Officers, Finance Officers Association awarded the county outstanding achievement and excellence in financial reporting for the June 30, 2012 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, 27th consecutive year that Frederick County has received this achievement. Also, the Government Finance Officers Association awarded the county for outstanding achievement and popular annual finance reporting for the same period, June 30, 2012, and it's the sixth consecutive year for that award. Just congratulate them and tell them how much we appreciate their outstanding work.
Anyone else?
We appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure I speak behalf of the rest of the board in congratulatory to the Finance Department. Thank you for bringing that forward for public attention. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, move for German.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Supervisor Collins. Second, Supervisor Collins. All is a favor? Aye?
Aye.
Those know, meeting adjourned.